I'm gonna call this meeting to order, the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for April 23rd, 2019. Can I get the roll call, please?
Let the record show that we do have a Quorman and a Woods president.
Will you rise with me for the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer? Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town, God, please watch over us and our citizens, please watch over our police department, as well as with our fire and EMS God and our troops that are serving here and overseas, God, be with us as we're here tonight and lead us in a Christ-like way, be with us as we leave here this evening, in Jesus's name, amen. All right, so there is no executive session reports, there is no public presentation.
You don't have, you have this?
I'm just gonna read it. All right, we do have one resolution, and that is 2019-03, and that is the 2019 tax rate resolution. All right, so it is real estate tax resolution 2019-03. Go ahead, Town Administrator.
Okay, what you have in front of you is the resolution that we're required to do every year that sets the real estate rate for the town of Rising Sun. And Mayor, you're gonna read the resolution, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, what, in a nutshell, the state of Maryland has a provision that requires transparency in regards to the tax rates that local jurisdictions set. Said differently, if the value of properties within a jurisdiction increases and the tax rate were to remain the same, there are special steps that the local jurisdiction would have to go through, which includes notifying people that there is an expected windfall of over $25,000 as a result of the real estate tax going up. If it's under $25,000, the municipality doesn't have to take any steps. But furthermore, related to this, that even if there is a slight increase in the total real estate value in the community, the state still provides what the constant yield or what the real estate tax rate would need to be in order to generate the same revenue that was collected the year before. So, in a nutshell, the real estate value for the town of Rising Sun did go up slightly over last year, and it is projecting slightly more revenue than what was projected last year, and they have suggested that the real estate tax rate could be lowered slightly in order to generate the same amount of real estate, or collected real estate tax. And so, that's what this resolution is gonna speak to today.
All right, so it's Resolution 2019-03, whereas the town is proclaimed as a perpetual entity with the right to pass laws, and whereas Chapter 9 of the Code of Ordnance of the Town of Rising Sun, titled Finance, Taxation, Business, and Trade, contains provisions that grant the Board of Commissioners with the power to appropriate municipal monies for any purpose with the powers of the council, and to levy, assess, and collect ad valorem property taxes or any of the type of tax allowed by law, and to have general management and control of the finances of the town. And whereas the town has received notice from the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation that the final taxable net assessable real estate, real property base for the town of Rising Sun will increase by roughly $2,577,395, which result in a projected increase of revenue for the 2019 fiscal year of roughly $12,420. And whereas Section 6-308 of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland provides the concept of a constant yield tax rate, requires the Department of Assessments and Taxations to certify to all taxing authorities a constant yield tax rate that will produce the same revenue in the coming taxable year that was produced in the prior taxable year. And whereas although the town has experienced over $50 million of lost property value over the last past 13 years, resulting in hundreds of thousands of dollars of lost tax revenue to pay for town services, the Mayor and Commissioners have established a simple financial management profile of annually assessing the needs of the town and making well-timed and strategic investments into infrastructure, equipment, and economic development, while holding the line on expenses and cutting costs without sacrificing services to our residents. And whereas having completed the investments in securing additional water and sewer capacity, the Mayor and Commissioners are cautiously optimistic about the town's future, as those infrastructure investments are beginning to materialize, as evident by the roughly 2.73% increase in town property values over the past two years, and the revitalization that is beginning to take shape in our Main Street. And whereas although the residents of the town of Rising Sun have the second lowest tax burden per resident in Cecil County, not all property owners will receive an immediate or direct benefit of this economic momentum. And whereas the Mayor and Commissioners do not want to forget about our property owners and recognize that the prosperity of those property owners is a great asset to be protected by the town. And whereas the constant yield tax rate, as described above, suggests that the town could formally adopt a new tax rate of 0.4735 cents for each $100 of assessed value, which would result in a total reduction of the real estate tax by roughly 1.37%, but would still result in the same tax revenue collected as the prior year. And however, the Mayor and Commissioners wish to invest further in our property owners by lowering that tax rate from 0.48 cents for each $100 of assessed value to 0.47 cents for each $100 of assessed value for the 2019 fiscal year. This will result in roughly 2.13% reduction in total real estate tax collected, while holding the line on expenses and cutting costs without sacrificing services to our residents. Therefore, be it passed resolved that the Mayor and Commissioners of the town of Rising Sun have passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on the 23rd day of April 2019. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2019-03?
So moved second.
It's been moved in seconded, any discussion? The one discussion point that I would say is, I think that this is a great thing for our community, we are all residents of this community, just like anyone else, we sit down and budget, and where we can, we try to make things more affordable. I think that this is a great thing, especially with the economic growth that you're starting to see on Main Street, and to be able to give this to the residents, again, I think it's a great opportunity for us to do.
Mayor, I'd like to add also that the town of Rising Sun's total expenses have remained the same over the last three years, so when we talk about holding the line on the expenses, despite changes and replacements of vehicle and upgrades to the different equipment and just standard cost of living increases on a regular basis, we're able to absorb those in here. And again, this would be another year where we will be able to balance our budget with a, you know, I've always said, we always balance our budget on nickels and dimes for the most part, but we are in a position here to give an immediate benefit back to a good number of our residents here.
And I think that what's important to add is, being a small town, sometimes we have big budgetary items, from police cruisers to other infrastructure equipment that we have to buy, but this year, we don't have to do that, and I think to be able to give money back to our residents is very important. So, any more comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2019-03 passes. Would anyone like to speak this evening?
I appreciate that resolution, I would like the county to do the same. I just was wondering if at some point...
One question, could you give your name and your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy Hurd, 407 Pearl Street.
Thank you.
I just wondered if at one point you would know if the rate for water was going to have to be increased, and if you had any idea how much that would increase, if it would be incremental, or if it would have to be all at once, if this isn't resolved with the county.
Okay. Calvin, if you wanna speak to that, you can.
Yeah, to summarize, the answer is that when the town invested in $16 million on the sewer plant, and then another 10, 10 and a half million on the water line, instead of raising the rates in one complete increment to cover that, the town adopted pro forma models, it extended out over a five-year period. The town of Rising Sun passed the pro forma model for the water line in 2016, and it called for incremental increases each year up through 2022. 2017, the town did not raise the rate, 2018, it did not raise the rate, until I believe it was October of last year, they did raise the rate. So, what we are trying to do in this budget cycle is, although we're not gonna be in a position to lower the rate, we wanna see if we can continue to kick the can down the road, so to speak, and not do the rate increases. And essentially, what we're doing in this budget process with the resolution, we're, the elected body is sort of putting its poker chips in the middle of the table and betting on the success of the town and the economic infrastructure investments that we made, that the market will take care of itself, and we can get more people in the water and sewer system, so that we might not be able to avoid raising the rate down the road, but we can continue to stretch it out far enough that at the end of a cycle, it won't be as high as originally was anticipated. So, not to speak for the board, we are still in the budget process, and it hasn't been decided whether or not we're gonna be able to freeze the rate again in this cycle, but it is something that the board is seriously considering, to see if we can freeze, freeze the rate. I hope that answered your question.
And I think just to go a little bit further, in this, I guess you'd call it the discussion with the county, the issues that we're having with Cecil County. I don't think not being able to do it is going to make us raise that rate more, I think if anything, what it's gonna do is not be able to let us lower it. If we are able to sell water outside of our town limits, then that's gonna be able to have the board to be able to evaluate whether or not we're able to lower the rate, because frankly, we're selling water out of town.
And lower the rate right now means lower the rate from the pro forma.
Right.
Right, so for that schedule, that was, which we're actually behind on anyway, we haven't raised the rate.
That's what I'm saying, we haven't, we haven't been following the schedule.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Mayor, you, Mayor, you raised a very good point that I think is important to emphasize, is that when the, there has been this perception that, I guess the detractors on what we're trying to do have put out there, that we have to have this water and sewer be sold, or we're gonna have to file for bankruptcy. That couldn't be any further from the truth, because what we did with pro forma, we were as aggressive as we possibly could be, and what I mean by that is, we said, what would the rate have to pay, to pay off this debt, if we were never able to sell water to anybody else? So, our pro forma rate is based upon us never selling water or sewer to anybody, because we wanted to be as conservative as possible. So, any water and sewer that we are able to sell just puts us in a better position, as the mayor is saying, is to be able to maybe lower it, but more importantly, flatline it, so it doesn't have to climb as high.
And that, that includes, when he says no water, additional water sales, that includes property in town that could be annexed, it's already, forget annexation, it's already in town, that could be developed, assuming those houses never get built even, which is pretty unrealistic. I mean, we've already had, what, one housing start, and we have two more, so this year alone, we're already, I mean, we're looking at three housing starts probably by the end of, you know, beginning of summer.
Thank you.
Chief?
Last Thursday, I had the opportunity to speak with the Cecil College on a panel that discussed the opioid problem in Cecil County. What you probably hear in the news quite a bit is that the rate of overdose has continued to go up, however, the rate of death has not. I mean, that says that the first responders are saving lives, or prolonging lives, so we still have a ways to go. Within the last couple days, we are getting help from the federal government in the form of a pharmaceutical company head was arrested for improper distribution of fentanyl and opioids. So hopefully, that can slow the, you know, large quantities that are being filtered into our communities. One of the benefits of living in a small town is you can walk from place to place and visit your neighbors and all, and with summer coming, that means more people will be out exercising and walking. So those that are driving through our community need to understand that, again, we're gonna be aggressively enforcing traffic laws, speeding and distracted driving are gonna be our main targets. So if you're coming to Rising Sun, and you've got a lead foot, or you wanna play with your radio, or play on your phone, be prepared to get stopped and cited if you're coming through town. We need you to slow down and respect our community, and save lives in our community. And yes, Mr. Mayor, that sounds like tough talk from me, because it is. We don't need any more kids hit by cars on Main Street, we don't need any more school buses hit by people distracted, it's time for that to end. May 18th, the Tiger Trot will be coming through town, so pay attention, because there will be some traffic delays, some detours, and a lot of people in the roadway. Again, we're not gonna have any tragedies here in town, if I can help it. On the uniform front, there's no new updates, we're still struggling, the law enforcement in the region is still struggling to find creators and seamstress and manufacturers of our custom-type uniform, but hopefully, we can get to something that, we can come up with a new uniform for the town if possible. Last week, I had the unfortunate discovery again of another manufacturer that went out of business. We had placed an order for ammunition, it was slow in coming in, I made some phone calls and discovered that the business appears to be gone, it's no longer in business. So now I'm waiting to find another distributor of ammunition, and it seems to be a trend when it comes to police stuff lately, that people are bailing for some reason. The two new officers are out on the street, they've been out there for close to a month now, they're still training, still learning, but with the help of our mentors, they will be up and running on their own shortly, and doing fine. With that being said, that is my report, unless there are questions. Okay, remember, remember, May 18th is the Tiger Trot, so look for the traffic changes.
Thank you, Chief. Town Administrator?
Yeah, a couple items I'd like to update everybody on is, obviously, we've had some concerns about the pothole repair at Ryan Drive in Main Street. Our folks were scheduled to repave that today, but a sewer line issue popped up, that they had to direct the attention to that. Part of the issue with Ryan Drive that I think I've said before, is that there is a water line running down through there that's not showing up on any of the maps that we were all-handed, and I mean that, it predates some folks at our Public Works Department, too. So it took them a while to be able to locate the leak down there. They made a repair, but they still appear to have a leak on another valve, and if you remember, we spoke a couple months back about the recall on valves that were used in water lines about 15, 18 years ago, 20 years ago, and that's around the time that some stuff has been done down in the Ryan Drive area also. So it is on the list to get redone. I've had discussions with the Public Works Department that since that line does appear to be running in a location that we did not know it previously was, we have an opportunity to put another fire hydrant down there, so that will give us, you know, additional fire protection for the fire company when we expose that water line, to put the additional hydrant down there. Our folks have been following up on pothole repairs, we're supposed to be doing seal coating here in the next two weeks, crack seal coating here. We're also re-experiencing a problem where motorists have a tendency to run off the road and hit our fancy streetlights, and we had another one get taken out down their PC enhancements. Those streetlights date back to the early to, you know, mid 2000s, they probably exceeded their life expectancy to begin with, we're starting to see a lot of corrosion and peeling paint on them, so we're gonna make a decision as to whether or not to try to repair them, which we've had a hard time doing, because as the chief runs into, the lights are no longer made, so getting replacement parts has been difficult for it. So we're gonna entertain in the budget process of potentially trying to secure some grant funds to put new, I'm calling in the fancy streetlights, so we're looking at that also. Building permit-wise, the residential house being built down on Rising, in Rising Hills, on Harrington Drive has hit a snag, I think I reported at the last meeting, no one realized that the electrical line was running through the foundation of where the new house was going to go. So we're trying to find out what the status of that project is, because right now, it's just a partially constructed foundation, or a hole in the ground, so we wanna get...
Calvin, did we have that, did we have any as-bills on that?
As-bills on what?
Where the, where the electric line was coming in?
This is from the original house, it predates that development.
Okay.
This is on the...
This is Mrs. Harrington's old house?
Yes, yeah, and so we don't, we don't have any as-bills on, on that particular property, for the electric. We also have T1 Mobile is gonna be replacing all the towers on top of the water tower, they're upgrading their communication capabilities on the tower. We've had an inquiry, as I've said before, for two building lots down on Walnut Street as part of the Stevens Preserve Phase 1, although Phase 1 technically was completed, and Phase 2 was technically completed, and they were looking for approval on Phase 3, the 114 homes, there are two building lots left over, I believe, from Phase 2, out on Walnut Street, so we've had inquiries from folks wanting to build on that. I did the final inspection for the Martin's Click and Go program, where people can go online and order their groceries from Martin's, they will collect those groceries, put them in a receiving area, and when you go to Martin's, they will bring your groceries out to your car for it. So I did the final inspection on that today, they have a couple items that they need to be cleaning up, and that concludes my report.
I have one more question. What's the size of the main there at Ryan and Main, East Main Street?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you, I'd be guessing, I don't think it's less than eight inches.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Moving into the Mayor's report, my report is pretty brief. We had a wonderful turnout and a beautiful day for the Rising Sun Little League Parade. I wanna thank everyone that attended, and all the Rising Sun Little League volunteers that make that program, in my mind, the best in Cecil County. It is definitely, certainly, the most attended, they have the most kids involved in their program in Cecil County. We also had the unveiling of our little library, which is out front on Main Street, for the town elected body to come together and promote literacy as a town-wide initiative, I think was great, and I've seen books come and go. In fact, one of the staffers here at Town Hall left a set of books, and by the next day, they were gone and replaced with new books. So it's quite fascinating to see how that little library works, and again, just to get kids out reading and enjoy being outside, I think is wonderful. Chief did say Tiger Trot 5K is coming up on May 18th at 9:00 a.m., you can register online for that, it's always a great event that's, that provides money for Rising Sun Middle School. I did wanna say congratulations to Commissioner Warnock, and to our town clerk Judy Melton at the Municipal League, Hartford Cecil Municipal League meeting, chapter meeting, they were both elected to officer positions. Commissioner Warnock will serve as our District 10 Vice President, which I think is great, and then Judy will, will serve as Chapter Secretary, so moving forward, if you could address her as Madam Secretary, that would be great, but a big...
Do we have to now call you, Mr. President?
Yes, in addition, I took over as Chapter President for the Hartford Cecil branch of the Maryland Municipal League. I did get a funny phone call the next day from Scott Hancock, who is the Executive Director of Maryland Municipal League, that I am officially the youngest Chapter President they've ever had in the Cecil Hartford chapter, so I thought that that was pretty funny, that he called me. Again, breaking barriers for the town of Rising Sun, I guess. So, moving forward, Commissioner Oth and Reith.
I have nothing tonight.
Commissioner Braun?
At a recent chambers meeting, it was announced that a new business would be opening next to the Rising Rhine on Main Street, and that business will be called the Art Den. I spoke to Kristy Kaufman, who will be running the business, and to find out something about what was gonna be happening there. She told me that it will be a full-service art studio, they will give private and group lessons, and painting, drawing, ceramics, and digital art. You could get a membership, which would include the use of all their non-consumable materials, non-members can drop in on a daily basis. They will have paint nights and kids' nights, and they will, they will be selling some art supplies. The grand opening is June 6th.
Thank you, Pauline. Commissioner Pearson?
I have nothing, but is June 6th, is that Sun Fest Day?
No, June 1st, Sun Fest.
June 1st. Commissioner Warnock?
So, the big thing right now is, this Saturday is the cleanup at Veterans Community Park, so we will be meeting at the end of Dairy Street, and in the Public Works Yard, and I believe, for the most part, unless we get a ton of volunteers, we'll be focused on picking up trash and removing invasive species and such over at Veterans Community Park. If we get enough volunteers, then we will send a group over to the dog park and also do some stuff there, otherwise, I have a group of scouts that's gonna come out and do some service learning hours over there, so, and I think that's the, and as far as the park itself, we have some areas where the grass is pretty tall by the playground, it's just too wet, they can't get a mower into it, it is like, I mean, soup would be a, it's actually starting to become like a, a new pond over there, it's just, we've had so much rain the last year, so that the standing water over there is getting pretty bad, so we're, we have some plans to go in and improve the drainage, but it's gotta dry out enough to get equipment in there to, to do that, so we're working on it, but it doesn't look great right now, and it's, but it's, we do have a plan to address it at some point.
And you are planning to move forward with summer movies in the park, you're gonna be getting together with me on that.
As soon as you tell me what movies.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Warnock.
That way, if nobody shows up, I can blame you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one thing I'd like to add.
Commissioner Pearson?
Just as a reminder, this Sunday is Cecil County Hazardous Waste Day, if you have old paint cans, old fertilizer, anything that, in that nature, you can take it to the Cecil County landfill.
Thank you, Commissioner Pearson. Just a reminder that the Rising Sun Chamber of Commerce Fishing Derby is May the 5th. Upcoming meetings for us, we have a Planning Commission Workshop Meeting on Monday, May the 6th at 6:30, we have another town meeting on May 14th at 7:00 p.m., Planning Commission Workshop Meeting again on Monday, May 20th at 6:30, and then our last town meeting of May will be Tuesday, May 20... And then our last town meeting of May will be Tuesday, May 28th at 7:00 p.m. Upcoming events, we already spoke of many times tonight. Tiger Trot 5K is Saturday, May 18th at 9:00 a.m. Sun Fest will be Saturday, June 1st. And then upcoming holidays, Memorial Day is May 27th. Town Hall will be closed. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.